Good morning, everybody, and welcome to this hearing. I want to welcome everyone who took some time out of their day to join us on this important subject matter, a little bit arcane but important nonetheless as it relates to our democracy and the districts that we run under. We are embarking on a new process in New York for redistricting and one that we're all learning as we go because it's never happened before and it's got a lot of twists and turns to it. So this is the first step forward in that process to talk to some of the experts, talk to some of the people who were involved both in establishing this and are just experts generally in the topic so that we can make some evaluations as a legislature to what we need to do to make this work as efficiently, productively, and fairly as possible. There's been a lot of changes since we first established this process, most notably the one that's necessitating some reevaluation and changes is the calendar. When this reapportionment process was initially set up, our state primaries are in September, which fit easily within the calendar laid out in the Constitution for the commission revealing its plans and the legislature reacting to them. Since that time, as everyone knows, our primaries have now moved to June, the petitioning process begins late February or early March, and that has made the timing of the existing constitutional provisions impractical. So we thought as long as we're reevaluating, let's talk to folks about what other changes are important and necessary that we can make, as well as talking generally about the commission process and how we can get that moving forward in the timeframe that we have to work with. I want to recognize my colleagues who are here. On the Senate side, co-chairing this hearing with me is the Chair of our Judiciary Committee, Senator Brad Hoilman. Welcome, Senator Hoilman. We are also joined by Senator Savino, Senator Breslin, Senator Gutierrez, and Senator Kaplan. Some of our members have been through redistricting processes before, so for some, it's their first time. So we have a good mix of folks on both sides. We also have with us our friends and colleagues from the Assembly. And I'm going to kick it over now to the Chair of the Assembly Government Operations Committee. It's a committee that I was actually the staff counsel for many years ago. So it's good to be working with them from this side as well. And Assemblyman Ken Zabrowski has done tremendous work in the Assembly, and I want to welcome him, thank him for joining us, as well as my co-chair on that floor, Assemblyman Rodriguez. And let me hand it over to Assemblyman Zabrowski.
Thank you, Senator Generis. It's a pleasure to be here with you today, all my colleagues and all those that are both listening and ready to testify. Also, welcome to Senate co-chair, Senator Hoilman, and to my Assembly co-chair, Assembly member Rodriguez. Great to be with everybody today in this important topic. I just have a few comments to make, and then we'll get this rolling. Every 10 years, the nation undertakes the process of counting citizens. It's critical that New York State receive an accurate count of its citizens and a portion of representatives in a manner that results in equal and just representation for the state. Next year, we will begin a new system of proportioning legislative representation for the people of the state. In 2014, New York voters approved amendments to the New York State Constitution, which changed the process for drawing legislative districts. An independent commission of 10 individuals will meet to attempt to decide how to best construct the representation of the millions of diverse individuals that make up our state. We're here in an uncertain time. The results of the national census have been delayed due to the COVID-19 outbreak. In times like these, we need to be flexible and mindful of our future. Thank you to all of the witnesses that agreed to testify today. We hope that your feedback and recommendations on our upcoming redistricting process will offer us some new insight that may help guide us through this process. Just on the Assembly side, let me say I mentioned co-chair Robert Rodriguez. We also have Assemblymember David Buckwald, Assemblymember Harvey Epstein, Assemblymember Sandy Galiff with us this morning. And as additional people join, I'll announce them at that point. Thanks, Senator.
Thank you. Thank you, Assemblymen. We've also had some additional joiners. You'll hear us announcing legislators as they arrive, but we have been joined by Senator Kevin Thomas, Senator Toby Stavisky. And to make this bipartisan effort, we also have Senator O'Mara and Senator Lanza joining us from the Senate side. I'm sure others will join in as we go. Okay, so we're going to move on to our first panel. I understand are all ready and waiting. Each witness will get five minutes to testify, followed by questions from the legislators. And in our first panel, I will read the names and affiliations, and please testify in this order. We're going to start with Blair Horner from NiPerg, Ellen Joy Williams from the Brooklyn NAACP, Susan Lerner from Common Cause New York, Juan Rosa from the Naleo Educational Fund, and Lurie Daniel Favors from the Medgar Evers Center for Law and Social Justice. So Blair, take it away. Blair, whenever you're ready.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
All right. Senators, Assemblymembers, thank you for the opportunity to testify on this important topic. This is my first Zoom hearing, so if I seem a little stimulated, please bear with me or tell me that I'm doing something wrong. We've submitted our written comments, and I will summarize our views here. But first, on behalf of NiPerg, we commend the houses for this hearing and for the scheduled hearings to come on a wide range of issues. It's important that the legislature reestablish itself as a primary policymaking body in New York's governmental system. These hearings and the action on a wide range of issues are important, and we applaud those activities. As you may know, NiPerg opposed the constitutional amendment in 2014, and our comments today may touch on some of those concerns that we had then and have now. But the focus of our testimony is on what can be done now to deal with the reality of New York's untested redistricting system in 2022. There are a number of issues that we're concerned about, including the timetable, which has already been discussed, which is now undermined by the change in the primary date, as well as the impact the pandemic has had on the ability of the census to deliver data to the states. Our concerns are magnified by the fact that this will be the legislature's first time working with a detailed, complicated redistricting scheme. Redistricting is hardly highly charged without adding a pandemic and a new law to the mix. If the census makes its data available for redistricting at the end of July 2021, that will give the commission virtually no time to draft maps and make them publicly available for comment in September, as the Constitution provides. The public hearings are important and will inform the commission on weaknesses in their plans. They have to then incorporate relevant recommendations and make their plan available to the legislature by January. The commission will have to operate at warp speed to make that all happen within five months plus. So the pandemic has created real logistical problems for compliance with the Constitution's redistricting requirements. Added to that is the candidates will be gearing up for primaries and will gearing up for primaries in early 2022, while the legislature may still be haggling over maps developed by the commission or making their own. Proponents of the amendment anticipated September primaries, so the new June primary day timetable may leave candidates unclear as to what districts they're running in. Neither of these problems can be remedied with constitutional changes in time, we don't believe. Statutory and budget moves can bolster the ability of the commission to do its work, assuming that all goes well with it. The commission is based on the model of the State Board of Elections, an agency notorious for gridlock when deciding important issues. The current commission hasn't yet jointly have chosen its two additional members and has done nothing that we can see to prepare for the daunting work ahead. One of the key reasons that we opposed the 2014 amendment was our view that the commission would never be truly independent, and commissioners may act as agents of their appointing authorities instead of the public interest. Given the lateness of the action and the limited ability to publicly hash out needed changes, there seems to be not a lot of time that can be done to amend the Constitution that would be consequential in 2022. However, there is one area that could be fixed in time, that would be to remove the unconstitutional provisions adopted in 1894, provisions that violate the one-person-one-vote requirements under federal law, and to change the deadline for second submission of the commission's plan by the end of February, although it does say no later then, and that could probably be fixed statutorily. There are other areas that should be fixed, but they may have to be for the 2030 recycling cycle, the redistricting cycle. We discussed those in our written testimony, but two important ones are eliminating the partisan redistricting commission and using language akin to what the Congress uses for mapmakers to make districts be comparable in size population-wise. Lastly, unrelated issue, we think you should consider capping the number of senators at whatever the number is that's appropriate, because as you all know, the Senate has grown from 50 members in the 1930s to 63 now. So thank you for this opportunity to testify. Again, we applaud your interest in this issue, and I'm done, because I can do this without making any noise.
I appreciate it. Let me just answer Senator O'Mara's question earlier. I misunderstood his question. The members' videos get turned on so they can be seen when they are speaking or are recognized, and otherwise, just the co-chairs and the panelists are on video. We also have been joined by Senator Kaminsky, Senator Zapolvina, and Senator Boyle. And next, we have Ellen Joy Williams from Brooklyn NAACP. Welcome.
Good morning, and thank you very much for the opportunity to talk with you this morning. The New York State Conference of NAACP is submitting full written testimony, but I just wanted to highlight a number of issues that the NAACP are focusing on now and will be focusing on throughout this process. For those of you who don't know, I am president of Brooklyn NAACP, but I'm also the legislative coordinator for the New York State NAACP Conference of Branches, which consists of thousands of members. We have over 51 branches in the state of New York under the leadership of our New York State Conference President Hazel Dutes. I'm sure you will hear from me a number of times throughout this process, not only on this issue, but on a number of different issues, but there are some key pieces I would like to highlight as you begin this process. So back in September of 2011, the late Reverend Anita Burson, who was then second vice president of Brooklyn NAACP, testified before the committee, and she began her testimony highlighting the lack of diversity and minimal representation of people of color, as well as diversity and gender, both on the committee and on the staff. And so as you begin the process, and as the speaker before me mentioned, that we are still in the beginning phases of how this process will play out, I urge you that as you are staffing up, if you will, that you focus on ensuring that the entire operation of our redistricting process is reflective of the great diversity of this state. This should be a guiding principle, not only for the individual staff, legislative aides, and others, and I'm talking about even a person making photocopies, but also any contractors and vendors that will be used for this process. In addition, I ask and urge the elected leaders to go a step further and expect both the elected leaders and commission to produce a report demonstrating not only your commitment, but your actions to this equity principle to ensure that our redistricting process is reflective of the people of the state of New York. Now, our redistricting process, as previously mentioned, will have a number of the first. It's the first time we will have an independent redistricting commission, and as you know and as the previous speaker noted, the New York State NAACP also opposed the commission at that time. But this is also the first redistricting process that we will be doing since the Supreme Court struck down the preclearance directive under Section 5 of the 1965 Voting Rights Act. This means that states like ours, which had districts under preclearance, including Brooklyn, will not have that preclearance principle to the Justice Department or Attorney General. Now, you may say, given the current U.S. Attorney General and Justice Department, that we may count that as a blessing. However, just because the federal version of preclearance is on hold until Congress takes action, it doesn't mean that the state of New York should not have some process, and we are advocating having a preclearance process with our state attorney general in the passage of a New York State Voting Rights Act that will ensure not only the voting rights and representation of people of color in the state of New York. The other issue that was highlighted in the previous redistricting process was that of counting those who are incarcerated. As you know, NAACP intended to join onto lawsuits on this particular issue, and it was something that was done in the previous census operation and has not yet been done for this 2020 cycle, so in urging the legislature to address this issue as well. So we are obviously behind the eight ball as I wrap up. The pandemic that is particularly ravaging our communities of color, in addition to a number of host of different issues in terms of the rising costs of living in New York, housing gentrification, and all of those issues. And at the center of this will be making sure that this process is inclusive and is not just a set number of folks that is separate and apart from the diversity of the state of New York. So I urge not only in the hearings that will happen, that are required to happen all over the state, but that the elected leaders, the committees and commission also create a process for active participation of the public, because we know our communities, we know our districts, in creating the maps and the process that will go forward to create a better New York. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ellen Joy. Next, we have Susan Lerner from Common Cause New York.
Thank you very much, and I want to join my colleagues, Blair Horner, in thanking the legislature for this hearing and to join in with the NAACP's call that the commission and all of its proceedings should be sensitive to diversity issues. As you may be aware, Common Cause New York drew the only set of statewide reform maps in the last redistricting process, and as a national organization, redistricting is one of our key issues, where we advocate across the country for fair redistricting processes, and we are the organization which wrote and passed the California system of an independent citizen-led redistricting commission process. I'd like to point out that we did receive a court ruling in 2014, which clarified that the commission set up by our Constitution should not properly be called independent because it really is politically appointed. But I do differ with Blair on the issue of what can be done currently to affect redistricting. I do believe that changes can be made timely to our Constitution, which will provide guidance to the commission and improve our process. And there are four areas that we identify in our written testimony. The first is, of course, the deadlines, which simply have to be changed. We recommend that the first set of maps from the commission go to the legislature on December 1, and that revised maps also have to be completed in December. We recognize this is a very collapsed timeframe with the late provision of information from the census, but I believe that the commission's requirements in the Constitution to hold hearings around the state and get input from citizens should remain in place, and that the commission should be given the resources to satisfy that requirement. We agree with NiPerg, the uncontroversially unconstitutional language that was placed in our Constitution in 1894 and held unconstitutional by the U.S. Supreme Court in 1964 should simply be removed. It serves no purpose, it's confusing, and good draftsmanship requires that it should be removed. We do advocate for some improvements to the redistricting process, which we believe would improve and add some good redistricting practices. We agree with the NAACP, the ban on prison-based gerrymandering can and should be memorialized in our Constitution. It is an important public policy, and there should not be any confusion regarding its application in any redistricting process for our state. We also believe that there should be a standard set for population equivalence. Based on our experience drawing maps, we believe that that standard should be plus or minus 2% to give map drawers sufficient flexibility to respect communities of interest and other necessary standards for good redistricting. And we also believe that there should be some language changes to encourage new and fair maps, and we believe that the requirement that the map drawers must start from the core of existing districts really impedes an open and fair redistricting process and should be stricken. Finally, we believe that the language in the Constitution should be changed to set a fair and politically neutral voting process for the commission and for the legislature. As a matter of policy, we do not support shifting rules of procedure based upon the political results of elections. We think particularly in this divisive time in our country that that precedent is a dangerous one and should be changed so that the rules apply equally irrespective of election results. To the extent that there is a concern in a not-independent commission that one party or another would take advantage, we believe requiring that the approval of the final maps must include the vote of at least one of the non-affiliated members of the commission would alleviate those concerns. And I look forward to further discussions of changes and improvements to our redistricting process. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Let me thank all the witnesses for being incredibly timely to the five-minute requirement. Next, we're going to hear from Juan Rosa from the Naleo Educational Fund.
Good morning. Thank you so much to Chairs Generis, Rodriguez, Hoilman, Zabrowski, and the committee members from the Senate and the Assembly for providing us the opportunity to testify on this important issue. I am Juan Rosa, Naleo Educational Fund. We are the nation's leading nonpartisan organization, which facilitates full Latino participation in America's political process. We have had a physical office here in New York City for the last 25 years, in which we've implemented multifaceted voter assistance and educational programming. Because redistricting shapes the contours of our representative democracy, we have been involved in several national and state dialogues for the last three decades about how to ensure that all redistrictings provide Latinos with a meaningful opportunity to participate in the process. We also believe that all redistricting must produce maps which provide Latinos with a fair opportunity to elect the candidates of their choice. Back in 2005, our board of directors articulated principles to guide our assessment of redistricting, whether lines are drawn by a legislature, a commission, or some other entity. In my testimony, I will address the extent to whether New York's current constitutional provisions comply with our principles and the impact of the delay in the delivery of census data on the process and the Latino community. First, our principles require that all redistrictings comply with the U.S. Constitution and the Federal Voting Rights Act. Generally, the criteria for redistricting set forth in New York's Constitution appear consistent with this goal. We are concerned that the provision prohibiting the drawing of districts that discourage competition could, under certain circumstances, make it more difficult to draw districts that comply with the VRA. And we will be watching carefully as the state's redistricting process moves forward to see if the provision on competition interferes with VRA-compliant districts. One of our key principles is that the application and selection process for members of a commission must result in a commission where reflects the geographic, racial, ethnic, gender, and age diversity of the political jurisdiction. We will note that there is language in the Constitution that requires, to the extent practicable, that New York's redistricting commission achieved this goal. Yet, we are extremely dismayed that New York's redistricting commission, that we are extremely dismayed, I'm sorry, I lost my point here, that no one Latino was selected for any of the first eight seats in your commission. Given the Latino compromise, nearly 20% of the state's population, the commission cannot reflect the state's diversity with an absence of Latinos and without a significant increase in Latino representation. Thus, we urge the first eight commissioners to select qualified Latinos for the remaining seats. We will also note that the Constitution requires legislative leadership selecting the commissioners to, to the extent practicable, consult with voting rights advocates and voters from underrepresented communities. To the best of our knowledge, this consultation did not occur with respect to the Latino community. In the future, it is critical that Latinos have a voice early on in the selection process. Our principles finally call for reasonable requirements for the qualifications and conduct of commissioners to ensure that they avoid conflict of interest and the appearance of impropriety. While we very much understand the importance of avoiding conflict of interest for any commission, we suggest that the restrictions in your Constitution may prevent civically engaged Latinos from being able to serve on the commission for past activities which do not create a meaningful risk of a conflict of interest. For example, having served as a professor or administrator at either CUNY or SUNY at some point in the last three years would bar anyone from being appointed to one of the last two seats under the current restriction on state employment. Thus, we suggest that these restrictions in the Constitution be reexamined to determine the extent to which otherwise qualified, civically engaged Latinos have been prevented or deterred by commission service by these restrictions. With respect to the potential delay in the delivery of resident data by the census to the state of New York, Congress is considering legislation which will provide for a 120-day delay in the delivery of census redistricting data to states, which would mean that New York might obtain its data as late as July 15, 2021. Given that the state's commission can complete its maps by as late as January 15, 2022, it is possible for the commission to meet its deadline even with a delay in the delivery of data. However, the commission must take several steps to ensure that the public has a meaningful opportunity to participate in the process, given this delay. For example, for, oh, thank you.
You can finish up, Juan, if you just have a couple more sentences.
Yes, I'm going to finish this one sentence. Thank you, Senator. Actually, no, we will just submit the rest. Thank you, Senator.
Okay, thank you. Next, we're going to hear from Lurie Daniel Favors from Medgar Evers Center for Law and Social Justice.
Hello, good morning. I apologize as lawn mowers literally just started blowing outside my window. Hopefully, you are still able to hear me well. Greetings to all, and thank you for the opportunity to present today. My name is Lurie Daniel Favors, and I am the interim executive director and general counsel at the Center for Law and Social Justice, a unit at Medgar's College at CUNY. At the outset, I would be remiss if I did not state that if this body is considering a constitutional amendment to make a correction and eliminate the minority party veto plan, which is currently contemplated in the redistricting commission provisions of the state constitution, we would be very happy to comment on that, and we would encourage your investigation of that option. As it now stands, we don't see how a minority party veto aids black voters and voters of color across the state, and to the contrary, this provision is actually disempowering to members of these communities. And if this body is considering such an amendment, it should be publicly announced as soon as possible so that we can provide comment, and we would welcome the opportunity to do so. During our 35-year history, CLSJ has consistently worked to defend the voting rights of New Yorkers of African descent and other racial minority New Yorkers. We've led or co-led numerous historic voting rights advocacy initiatives or litigation across the state, the details of which are contained in our written testimony. As it pertains to the upcoming redistricting cycle, we continue to advocate that new districts be drawn such that they comply with the Voting Rights Act's one-person-one-vote rules. While the Supreme Court adopted a stricter standard for congressional districts than those employed for state and local districts, equitable access to the ballot requires the state legislator to seek to achieve population equality among the state legislative districts. Thanks to improvements in computer software, population equality is far more possible today than it was even 10 years ago, and this is particularly notable in light of the nationwide calls for racial equity and justice following the killings of members of our community like George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Ahmet Arbery, and the many others who have lost their lives due to systemic racist violence. It would be untenable to face another decade in New York State with small districts upstate and larger districts downstate, particularly when these desperately drawn districts disenfranchise wholesale black communities and communities of color on a statewide basis. The requirements of the Voting Rights Act must also be adhered to. As noted by my colleagues, the SCOTUS Shelby decision gutted the Section 5 preclearance provision of the VRA, and with that demise, New York State must pass a state voting rights act which contains a preclearance provision into law, particularly due to the fact that several New York jurisdictions were covered by the VRA's Section 5, and the underlying reasons for that coverage have not been ameliorated. And the underlying reasons for that coverage have not been ameliorated, and a state voting rights act is necessary. According to Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act, redistricting plans must not experience minority voting strength, and they should not be drawn such that they reduce the number of minority, majority districts, nor such that the minority population percentage is reduced to such a level that it makes it more challenging for minority voters to continue electing candidates of their choice. In light of these requirements and the history of the racially polarized voting in New York, including New York City, when drawing minority-majority districts, we maintain that the minority voting population should be at least 55% to ensure that minority voters will be able to elect candidates of their choice. The reformed state redistricting process must be transparent and open, which means that the commission should make public all of its redistricting criteria and procedures. There should be public access to redistricting data within weeks of its receipt from the state by the Census Bureau, and there should be as many public hearings across the state as possible with several intensely populated areas upstate. This is particularly significant as the commission must hear directly from the people, especially during this heightened age of mass civic engagement. This is how we ensure that the process is informed of the concerns and values of community leaders, residents, and activists. Those voices must not only be welcomed, but they must be centered throughout the process. To these ends, we urge that you make your data publicly available and that you advocate for the redistricting commission to hold as many public hearings as possible. It must also be noted that contrary to the provisions of the New York State Constitution, which calls for the members of the commission to reflect the diversity of residents of this state with regards to race, ethnicity, gender, language, and geographic residence, there is currently a stunning lack of diversity to the current composition of the commission. Current membership only includes one man and one woman of African descent and does not include a single Asian or Latinx member. Racial, gender, and geographic equity must be enforced for all redistricting bodies and their staff. Additionally, as noted, legislators must advocate to maintain the end of prison gerrymandering. While prison gerrymandering was addressed in 2010, it has not yet been resolved for the 2020 cycle, and we are demanding that this commitment to abolishing prison gerrymandering for the purposes of redistricting continues. And we ask that our legislators do the same. And to be clear, this is a part of the process that can happen now. The prisons are well aware of the jurisdictions from whence incarcerated persons come, and they do not need to wait until 2021 to receive additional data. And we encourage you to advocate for them to start now. We also know that the commission has not been empowered by a budget and cannot functionally operate. The commissioners are volunteers and need to have administrative backing behind them in order to be effective. Upon current knowledge, it remains an open question as to whether or not the legislature will allow the commission to use the Lat4 agency or if the legislative body will retain control over Lat4 for its own use. We are encouraging you to give it over to the commission so that the redistricting process has the full benefit of the decades of knowledge held by this agency. Thank you. We look forward to remaining engaged with you and all interested parties to ensure the equitable drawing of maps that reflect the true diversity of New York State.
Thank you, Lurie. Appreciate it. I also appreciate the dynamic camera work and mobile nature of your testimony. And you reminded me I should apologize at events. We're all in New York, so if anyone hears helicopter noise or airplane noise, welcome to Queens. For questions, we're asking legislators that are interested to raise their hand. And I don't mean actually raise your hand. I mean hit the raise hand button on the Zoom application. And then you will be called on. We're going to alternate between the Senate and the Assembly. And I will begin with a question. There were a couple of witnesses that had made reference to unconstitutional provisions of the Constitution in Article 3 as it relates to things that are over 100 years old and have since been ruled invalid by various rulings of the Supreme Court and otherwise. So I guess there's a question for Blair Horner. Can you just outline what those provisions are, or at least some of them? So we get a sense of what we're referring to.
Well, in the state constitution, there is language that basically allocates legislators based on geography instead of population. And the Supreme Court, as Susan mentioned, in the 1960s struck down those provisions for the country and said that you should adhere to a system of one person, one vote. Now, I don't know why that language is still in there. I mean, you would think it would have occurred to people in 2012 that having dead letter language in the state constitution is a, it doesn't make any sense, and they should take it out. I never got a good explanation as to why it was still in there, other than they were too busy. So the fundamental issue really is the issue of basing legislative districts on something other than population.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Blair. I don't know. I think Susan Lerner mentioned that as well. Do you have any, you want to add to that?
In my written testimony, I specified the provisions that I believe should be stricken in Article 3 at Section 4D and specific language in Section 5. And we also recommend that language in 4C, which references state constitutional standards, should be stricken. I fear that the unconstitutional language was left in and this additional reference made to muddy the waters should there be any litigation on further maps. And so we believe for clarity's sake and just, you know, good drafting, that the unconstitutional provision should be removed, along with the reference language.
Thank you, Susan.
Senator, thanks. I want to first mention that we were joined by Assemblymember Palmasano and Assemblymember Bedell. And our first Assemblymember to ask questions will be Assemblymember Buckwald.
Hi. Thank you, Chairman Zabrowski, and to all the chairs and everyone for today's hearing and to all the panelists who presented. First, just as a factual clarification, I think a statement was made that there are no Asian Americans on the commission. I think that's incorrect. I think one of the Senate Majority Leader's appointees qualifies. But my question is more broadly, and for any panelist who wants to answer, a lot of the remarks up till now have been about what changes can and should be made to the state constitution following up on the last constitutional amendment. As everyone knows, our state constitution, the process for amending it is a multi-stage process that takes at least a few years, a couple of passages through the state legislature, and then a vote of the people of New York. So my more immediate question is, with the upcoming redistricting, under the existing constitutional provisions, what proposals do folks have as to how to address the concerns that have been expressed without yet getting to the further constitutional amendments? Because we're going to have a section of redistricting that affects us for the next decade. And I'd like to hear the non-constitutional amendment solutions. I do take note of some of the points made about appropriate appointments for the remaining commissioners and so forth. But in terms of the process the commission actually uses within the framework that's laid out as is now, what are the steps that you think the commission itself or the legislature should be taking to make sure it's as productive and fair a process as possible? And I direct that whoever wants to take up the question.
I'll take an initial crack at it. I mean, the, you know, Susan mentioned earlier, there are a number of issues that you could do constitutionally. But you could pass legislation to, I think, strengthen the prison gerrymandering issue more clearly. And one of the complaints that I've heard is since it passed in 2010, the constitutional amendment was passed in 2012 and did not include it, that that might be an opportunity for mayhem. And so clarifying that that, in fact, is the law of the land, although I don't know if you need a law to do that, but certainly some mechanism to make it clear to the commission that they should include it would be one.
Mr. Horner, could I just ask, is the existing statute, did it expire? Or is it still on the books and applies? And can you just explain then, why do you believe the existing statute, which as far as I know was adhered to in the 2010 or 2011 redistricting, why that isn't sufficient?
No, I think it would be sufficient. I mean, I have heard people argue that it is an issue because the passage of the constitutional amendment occurred after the use of it. But again, there's no, you're right, the commission should follow the law, and that is the law. The deadlines, you might be able to statutorily move them up beyond, although the constitution obviously trumps any statutory lines, deadlines. It's important that the commission act more quickly. I agree with Susan. The deadlines would have to be moved up. I think you could also argue to change the, through statute, to change the population variance. Right now, under the Supreme Court decisions, the legislature, the mapmakers have up to 10% range in terms of population size. And as was mentioned by one of the other testifiers, that the Senate districts, in particular, the Senate districts had large populations vis-à-vis upstate Senate, and the opposite was true in the Assembly. So those are issues you could deal with, I think, constitution, I'm sorry, statutorily. But I think it's really going to come down to the commission and the resources it has to getting the job done. And the commission is not fully appointed yet. It does not reflect the diversity of the state. And they're going to have a hell of a time to try to meet the various deadlines that are in the state constitution, even if you were able to move them up. And so I think that's really where the action is in terms of statutory changes or budgetary changes for the commission.
I'd like to add that I think some of the things that we are proposing, including, as Lurie Daniel Favors mentioned, the minority veto provisions. Even though they need to be changed constitutionally, they could, through an immediate process, be changed before the final votes on the maps are necessary. So even with a constitutional change, I believe that there are significant ways in which that constitutional provisions can be timely changed.
Thank you. Everyone, I see my time is up.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator. We've also been joined by Senators Shelley Mayer, Gustavo Rivera, Jim Goran, and Zildar Myrie. And I would go to Senator Myrie for a question.
Sorry, I was just waiting to be unmuted. Firstly, good morning to everyone, and thank you to all of the panelists. I wanted to direct this question primarily to Lurie and Eljoy, but obviously welcome responses from the rest of the panel. My concern is mostly around the communities of color that will be impacted by a census undercount and no protection from Section 5, or used to have been known as Section 5 in the federal VRA. And I'm wondering if you can speak to what the implications might be if we do not have that protection and there is an undercount in our communities, what that means for redistricting, what that means for the political power of communities of color all across the state.
Well, you know, I'm going to start off by first, and this was in our written testimony, talking first and foremost, as you mentioned, about the census. And while obviously the census has been significantly impacted by the pandemic that we are experiencing and that we all experience here in the state of New York, I think it's unacceptable that organizations like ours, who are all volunteers, organization, were able to quickly determine how we can continue to do our census outreach and operation in the midst of a pandemic to ensure our communities were counted. However, the state process has been stunted. And so I find it very, you know, disappointing that a state with its resources, with the plan and execution, that we are still, the state is still on hold in terms of how it's properly, and I'm talking, this is separate from whatever advertising may exist. Advertisement is different from outreach. It is a method of outreach, but it is not the sole determinant of how we ensure that people are counted within our communities. And so the first piece I would say about the census is obviously, before we even get to a redistricting process, we always, we also have to make sure that people in New York State are properly counted. We saw and have experienced for the last decade what an undercount means in terms of resources for our community and our federal government. We already send more money than we actually, we already send more money than we actually give back. Why give the federal government additional ammunition to keep our money? So that's one. And so I urge the legislators to call the state in operation to task on what is happening and what is the quick method. Because if volunteers are able to quickly come together via Zoom and figure out how we can execute a census operation to ensure our communities are counted, by all means, the state should do so. And to your point, your later point in terms of what this means, this also means that if we do not have an accurate count when we get to redistricting, that creates this fight and this tension for resources and for seats that additionally adds the political connotation in it, where we're then putting groups against each other in terms of political representation. And so it has disastrous effects for people of color. You can go throughout the history in the state of New York on how many times NAACP has had to sue, and black people in general have had to sue in the state to ensure that we have proper, equal political representation in this state. We did that on local levels across the state in terms of the expansion in New York City Council, expansion in other councils and school boards across the state. And so if we do not start from that premise and then also make sure that we have proper representation and equity throughout the process, we are setting our state up, again, to not only receive our fair share from resources, but further create political fighting within the state and then, again, have a whole nother decade where we are scrapping for resources. And who that hurts is always people of color end up being at the bottom.
I would also add that with the absence of a Section 5 preclearance provision, the redistricting, the portions of our state that were covered by Section 5 would have had to submit their redistricting plans for evaluation and approval prior to implementation. The fact that we do not have a Section 5 now means that those same jurisdictions, and quite frankly, others that were not covered, but in all honesty should have been, are not going to be held to the same standards of equity, equity as it pertains to redistricting outcomes. And so echoing, in addition to what Joy said, there's just a practical matter of needing to have that additional referee on the field who's going to make sure that the plans that are created are going to center the same principles that govern the application of Section 5. And it should be noted that the Section 5 covered those portions of our state because the need was ongoing. It had not been ameliorated. The issues that brought these portions of our state under the coverage of Section 5 are still in a position where they require that level of coverage and supervision. And so I think having a statewide version is going to be fundamentally important, not only for redistricting, but ensuring access to voting rights going forward. And I would just finally add, it would be extraordinarily helpful if the $70 million that had been pledged to the state organizations, I mean, municipalities, for census outreach to go beyond the media activism that Joy mentioned, were actually released. There was an entire process that the governor announced in January. I actually spoke at the announcing conference, and we were very excited about that. And there has been radio silence on those funds ever since. So we need those funds to be distributed now, like two months ago. And that in and of itself would be as significant as it pertains to helping to ensure that the first portion of this issue, the accurate count, was not going to be undermined.
Thank you both.
Senator, thanks. I'll take the next question. And for panelist Favors, you mentioned briefly and said you would expand upon it that you felt that minority veto would or could disenfranchise minority communities. Just so we have a complete record, could you expand on that? You said you'd be happy to expand on it, but I only heard that one sentence.
Yes, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So yes, so the minority veto, as noted by myself and others, is something that because voters of color across the state are not equitably enrolled in various parties, the minority veto is something that could really work to harm communities of African descent, communities of color across the state because it is essentially a provision that is not going to recognize the needs and the sanctity of those communities to be, to have their preferences and to have their engagement with this process recognized and respected. And because the minority provision essentially, now that we have two members or both houses, the House, I'm sorry, both the Assembly and the Senate are both led by members of the same party, it essentially cedes the approval of the redistricting plans. it essentially cedes the approval of the redistricting plans to the, to the party that is not in power. And so that is a provision that will work to harm communities of color, particularly communities of African descent, simply because it does not allow for the equitable consideration of the concerns that go into determining where boundary lines should be drawn, because voters of color are not equitably enrolled across those two parties.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the list, I have Senator Brad Horman.
Thank you, Senator Gene Harrison. Thank you for bringing us together here along with my Assembly colleagues. And it's appropriate that we've heard already from Senator Myrie, the elections chair, who represents a district that looks like a steam shovel. I think people know about those lines in his district. I just wanted to follow up on the census question because it's a great concern that not only are communities not possibly being counted, of course, the black and brown communities, which is a great concern, but also the census itself may be delayed due to COVID-19. And I was wondering if any of the panelists had thoughts on how the delay of even an inaccurate count of the census will have an impact on redistricting moving forward? In my district, some of my neighborhoods, you know, have responded to the, you know, rate of like, you know, less than 40% in some neighborhoods due to COVID-19. Any thoughts from any of the panelists on that point?
I think this is where, an issue I believe that Susan and others mentioned this, where the state needs to be nimble and make sure that we have, you know, dates that sync up. This is things that we can do now to the process. I know that the federal government has put out an adjusted timeline as it pertains right now. So us taking action on the adjusted timeline as it pertains, as it's been put out right now. And then what are some of the things that we can do leading up to and in preparation for the redistricting process? So I think the timeline certainly has a direct effect, and particularly as we talk about municipal elections that happen all across the state. And as people, you know, are running for lines next year that will then have to change, you know, further. So those are, the calendar is something that we have to pay close attention to and be nimble enough that the session should not end, you know, that the year should not end without the legislator, legislature addressing these issues as it pertains to the schedule right now.
Senator, just to add one thing on that. I mean, when you think about it, by the way, it's the huge unknown. I mean, who knows what the pandemic brings us, right? So as of now, you could have the Commission dealing with the month of August, when generally people take like vacation, and the first half of September to get their, to get maps ready and materials out and everything, the whole public hearings across the state. And that really is hard. Now, they could be doing a lot of work to prepare for that in advance. And that's why getting the Commission up to speed quickly matters. But the census timetable, assuming it's the same next summer, gives it essentially counting, you know, work weekends somewhere in the neighborhood of 45 days to get all that work done. And that's, that's going to be really hard. The timetable that's contemplated in the Constitution was based on a non-pandemic, which of course, why would they expect otherwise? And primaries being in September. And those are real problems in terms of the Commission getting your work done.
You know, there's no question that the Commission is going to be squeezed in terms of the timeframe. But I would agree with Blair that advanced preparation is absolutely essential. You know, there will be some surprising demographic shifts, but demographic trends are pretty obvious through the ACS during the entire preceding decade. And there are ways in which proper staffing and preparation can ensure that the Commission is ready to draw down the demographic data, do the necessary evaluation, and have clear guidance in advance from the Commission in terms of the standards, which are to be applied to the map drawing. As Lori pointed out, we have advanced technology. We had it in the last cycle. It is usually the process of negotiating the politics of the district lines that take more time than the actual application of the technology to the data.
Okay. I want to first mention that Assemblymember Heineman has joined us. And our next Assemblymember that's looking to ask questions is Assemblymember Goodell.
I'm not sure if you can hear me or not.
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I had a question for Ms. Daniel Favors. You mentioned that the minority voters should be represented at 55% if possible. As you know, there are two ways to eliminate representation by members of the minority. One is by dilution, reducing them by gerrymandering so that they don't have a controlling influence. The other approach shows the opposite, by consolidating them all into one district so that the remaining districts that are around there are clearly not under any influence of being taken over, if you will, or having a minority representative. How do you balance those two conflicting approaches? And what are your recommendations on how we approach that? I would point out, by the way, in a competitive district, it's not your base set results in winning or losing an election. It's your swing voters. How do you balance those?
Well, I think, as just noted by Susan, the capacity to have access to technology really does help us to draw districts that are neither packed nor cracked. I think there is a world that exists in between those two poles that when applying principles of equity and when applying principles of justice in line with the principles that have been outlined for us by the courts, we are definitely able to draw districts that are reflective of the diversity of this state and that empower minority communities to be able to have an equitable shot at electing candidates of their choice. And I think this is not something new. This is something that we have seen done before. And so long as we are adhering to those same principles and we are centering the needs of the community and employing the access that we have now to technology, which in 2010 was allowing for equitable drawing of districts and has only improved since that time, I do not think that we are stuck between the two. I think it's a false choice to look only at packing or cracking a district. And there are certainly tools available to us now, particularly in light of having the access of time that we do right now with forewarning and proper preparation, that we can apply the judicial principles that should be guiding these decisions along with the technology to ensure that these districts are equitably drawn in ways that empower minority communities to have access to the ballot and to have access to putting candidates into office that are reflective of their true choices.
So would it be your recommendation then that you look at all the demographic factors that you've mentioned, including, you know, communities, neighborhoods, school districts, things of that nature, trying to group people of similar interests and concerns together, rather than perhaps using an artificial threshold like 55% that would be packing or a lower threshold?
Well, I think if your 55% is informed by the principles of communities of interest, excuse me, both existing and emerging communities of interest, then I think you can strike gold. District plans should not divide populations in communities that have those common needs and interests, as you noted. And they can be drawn in ways that not just only consider census data, but they can also be informed by demographic studies, by surveys and sociological economic data to determine the shared social and economic characteristics of each community. As we testified in 2010, some of those social and economic characteristics that should be considered include, but are certainly not limited to income level diversity, educational backgrounds, housing patterns and living conditions, language and cultural characteristics, employment and economic patterns, health and environmental conditions. All of these elements and pieces of data should be used to inform how these districts are shaped, and they should be used to inform that 55% threshold that we are suggesting.
I would agree with all the comments that you made, with the exception of an artificial percentage. And I agree that our mission should be to avoid either cramming or cracking. And so I would hope that as we move forward, we don't set artificial criteria, but look at all the diverse factors that you mentioned, which I think are incredibly important. I have one other question for any of the panelists. There's a lot of talk about the minority veto that's contained in the Constitution. As you know, we, for the first time in many years, at least a decade, have split houses with the Senate and the Assembly. We saw what happened when the Senate was under Republican control. We had small districts in New York, I'm sorry, small district upstate, large districts downstate. The flip occurred in the Assembly. My district was the largest in terms of population. And the Assembly districts in New York City were as small as they could be so they could squeeze out a couple extra members. If we eliminate the requirement that both parties agree that the redistricting is fundamentally fair, what would you suggest we do to protect the minority parties from being gerrymandered out of existence?
So in my written testimony, I suggest that the way in which to alleviate those sorts of concerns for gerrymandering by either party in their own self-interest would be to ensure that the final maps must contain, must, the majority which would approve the final maps must include at least one unaffiliated member of the Commission, who one would assume does not have a particular political favorite. And therefore, it would be representative of a class of voters who remain pretty much unrepresented in our process, which is the large number of unaffiliated voters. And so I think that that would ensure a fairer and more open process in the final maps.
Thank you. My time's up. But I would just note that a lot of unaffiliated voters are anything but unaffiliated. Their only unaffiliation is their registration. And if we wanted to follow that process, we might want to consider having the Commission representatives reflect the percentage of registered but unaffiliated voters. Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you, Assemblymen. Next, we have Senator Gustavo Rivera.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator, and thank you, Assemblymember. And thank you, everyone who is here today. My question is for Ms. Williams. Pleasure to see you, ma'am. You mentioned previously that the state needs to engage in additional outreach and participation for redistricting process. So I wanted to have you expand on that. Beyond the hearings, what exactly do you mean?
Yeah, I think this is an important point because I believe that people believe that the extension of outreach is just on the hearings, that you come and testify and that's outreach. We talk to the community. And rather than having a process in which people are active participants in the process of drawing lines, and I'll do this by giving an example. In a previous timeframe, I served on a local community board for nearly a decade, serving as Vice Chair of our Land Use Committee at that time, where we actually rezoned Bedford-Stuyvesant. And in doing that process, there is the official process that happens, right? Where the, you know, the council actually puts it out, you do the guidance and things of that nature. But we did additional steps in the summer before the process started. And those additional steps were walking through the neighborhood, talking to people and sort of creating, and looking at what is existing, how people were using the space in different ways in order to create the zoning that we now have. The state can do a similar process in the Commission, and elected leaders should do a similar process as it pertains to redistricting. Certainly, I'm not suggesting y'all walk the state of New York, although that would be a great reality show.
I commit to walking the distance, certainly. That's like, walk around my district.
Right. But that we actively invite people, as Lori mentioned, sort of in this heightened period that we are of civic engagement, and then actively invite people that as we are preparing to draw maps and draw district lines, that you begin to give the Commission, give that additional information on the communities that exist within the districts in order to keep them together as we are using the mapping technology. So yes, technology is great. And everyone who knows me knows that, you know, that is something that I invest in and use. But mapping software cannot tell you the break of a community that may be like, you know, different people living together or certain housing buildings and things of that nature, right? And so I think the Commission, the elected leaders, have to invite the public beyond public hearings to actually participate in the process. I know that last time we had Draw Your Own Maps and, you know, that kind of software online. But actively invite people to participate in the process of drawing lines of their community for their political power. Because people vote based upon their community. They vote based upon the resources and the things that they need within their community. So taking, so making a redistricting process absent that community, absent that outreach, is taking out that life, that engagement that happens on a daily basis and also happens as it pertains to our politics.
Would you agree then that also that there needs to be a commitment from the Commission that such participation is actually going to be taken into account in a real way? So it's not just ornamental?
I would say that is similar to my call in my testimony as well about making sure that the entire process has a focus principles of equity and diversity. So I don't want to also, you know, hear Commission members or elected say, yes, we're committed to a diversity. Like, I want to see a report specifically on how the staff, the vendors, and everybody that is involved in this process, you know, demonstrates that commitment. So a line that I'm similar to saying, I don't want to just see the mural and the press conference. I want to see the actual work that you did to demonstrate your commitment to those principles.
Thank you. That's my, that's my time. Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Eljoy.
Assemblymember Epstein.
I want to thank the panelists. I want to thank the chairs for holding this important hearing. I'm just, I mean, this is a really important topic. And I think so few people actually know anything about redistricting. And I guess really, this goes to the crux of what we're trying to do, is how do we engage people in a really meaningful conversation? And where do we find people from where they're at? And I'm wondering if we should be using existing systems and structures in place, like our Kuni and SUNY system, our schools, you know, our places of higher education, our places of worship, instead of just having this traditional like, come to a public hearing and talk about redistricting? And really, how do people dig in deeper so we can have meaningful change and meaningful impact? I'm just, and I'm not sure it's geared to any specific panelists, but I'd love to hear people's feedback.
So in the New York City redistricting, Common Cause developed a series of workshops along with partners to engage communities in a mapping exercise and thinking tangibly about what district should look like. My favorite one was one that we conducted in Sunset Park, where we had to have translators for both Spanish and Chinese. I would certainly recommend to all of the elected officials who are here today that you could be leading similar discussions in your own districts. It was shocking to me for the New York City redistricting that virtually none of the city council members engage their constituents in that sort of a dialogue. And I would hope that, you know, the legislators would want to interact with their constituents, provide some services in helping to, helping them tangibly engage with the way in which people live, work, and gather in their particular areas, which is a mapping process. We are more than happy to share our experience with any legislators in leading those sorts of discussions. And that could then be handed to the Commission. And the Commission itself should be encouraged to develop community mapping resources, not just technology, but guidelines for how to facilitate that sort of discussion.
I would also like to add to that. Thank you so much for that, Susan. At the Center for Law and Social Justice, we, in collaboration with the members of the we, in collaboration with the members of the New York Voting Rights Consortium, Asian American Legal Defense Fund, and Latino Justice, engaged in a Unity Maps project over the past two cycles, where we came together for exactly that purpose, not only to involve the community, but to ensure that the community was clear about what the redistricting process is, had a voice in helping to determine, as Joy mentioned, where do our communities start and end? And it was one that was able to uphold the principles of equity as it pertains to representation and fairness. And so I think that this is a process that certainly is one that various organizations have been involved in. And it's something that I think elected officials certainly could be doing more as it pertains to engaging their community members. But organizations that are represented here and others that will be testifying later are already in the process of having those conversations. Support for that work would be wonderful. And being clear about the value that communities bring to this process in ways that allow them to determine what their communities look like, I think is very, very important. And so that Unity Maps project is a project that is ongoing, and it's something that we will be doing again in this round. And they were literally able to create a set of New York State maps that respected and built upon the strength of the historically recognized racially protected groups under the Voting Rights Act. They were able to increase the number of districts controlled by protected groups, the Asian congressional district, and kept communities' interests intact and avoided that typical cracking and packing of voters that I mentioned earlier.
I'd just add one thing on the colleges you referenced. I mean, we have affiliates at a bunch of SUNY, CUNY, and some private schools. And we found that it's getting people engaged is hard because it's a pretty esoteric topic. And just by reading the state constitution, the rules are, I guess, could be best described as complicated. But we, last two cycles, we ran the Name That District contest, which was a big hit on college campuses. One that became reasonably well-known was Abraham Lincoln riding a vacuum cleaner in the cycle of 2002. And it was also a way, though, to sort of get people engaged and to talk about what happens. There was a district in, I think it was in 2002, where the map was drawn to cut out Hakeem Jeffries out of an assembly seat that he was seeking to run for. And I think we all know who he is now. So there's certainly ways to do it, but the maps are the tool. And getting it from the esoteric to real life has been certainly for us the challenge. We're planning another contest next year.
Thank you. I think my time is up.
Okay, thank you, Assemblymember. Next, Senator Tom O'Mara.
Okay, I think that's set now. Is that right? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. And thank you to the panelists that are here today on this important topic. And I look forward to the next two rounds of panelists as well. I would note, for the record, that we did not receive a witness list for these witnesses until quarter to 10:00 this morning, when this hearing started at 10:00. The witnesses of each reference, their written statements submitted. The minorities have not received those written statements. So I hope we do at some point, and we'll be able to follow up and questioning of these witnesses if we deem it necessary. The further the, each of the panelists and each of the members that have spoken so far have discussed their concerns over the timeline here, the compressed timeline because of the census being delayed. However, while money has been appropriated in this year's budget for the funding of the independent redistricting commission, the majorities of the legislature have not released that money to the commission. Therefore, they cannot hire executive directors. They have no resources to have an initial meeting. And they have no resources to hire staff. I just find that unconscionable in this compressed timeframe that we're talking about, that these resources have not been released. The commission needs to get together because they need to pick two independent commissioners from amongst themselves. That needs to be done, and there needs to be hiring of executive directors and staff. I would like the panelists here to please comment on your thoughts on why this funding has not been released? And do you think it's important that that money be released as soon as possible so that the commission's work can commence? Thank you.
I guess I would just offer, I do not know why the funds have not been released. It is untenable. And quite astounding that we are at this point of this process embarking on something this significant, and the body charged with shepherding us through the process has not been properly funded. And I will leave it there.
So, you know, I will add that, you know, I understand, and given the pandemic that everyone is experiencing, you know, that there are shifts and delays in all of our operations. And so I understand that. But here's where I think we can move forward on this is, I think the hearing today and inviting us to participate and to express the concerns and also the principles that the commission, that the legislature and others will need to have in place in order to move forward is important. But again, you know, I know for a fact that government can move quick when it decides it wants to. And so in this instance, I think this is one issue, recognizing the timeline, recognizing the impact the pandemic has had on all of us, on all our normal operations and on our community operations, that we can quickly come together and that government and our leadership can quickly come together to execute a plan that we can begin to hire and execute an operation that will ensure that the state of New York has a fair, equitable census and redistricting process. And so while, yes, I stand in agreement with, you know, with Lorie and others that they're, you know, we are a little, we are behind. I also know that with the, everybody committed to move forward, we can do so.
I'll just add, I guess, from our perspective, yeah, the commission should get moving. The money should flow. Hopefully, the hearing will act as a stimulant for that to happen. But as Senator, I don't know if you were here in my opening comments, but we were not big fans of the commission in the first place. I have to admit, I'm somewhat skeptical. But certainly, there's no reason for them not to get moving and the money to flow and to hire the staff. And then we'll get to see what happens with them. There's a lot of work that needs to be done. We talked about getting the public involved. There's no reason why the commission can't do some of that even before they get the census data to start collecting the kind of feedback that the Senate and Assembly is seeking today.
Thank you. I would further note that none of the commission members are testifying today. My understanding is that they have not been requested to testify. My understanding is that Speaker Hasty's appointment, Eileen Frazier, has specifically requested to testify today and has been denied. I am somewhat skeptical of this hearing as a whole. I'm concerned with the lack of moving forward with the funding for this commission, the fact that the commission is not involved today. And I'm skeptical that the majorities of the legislature want the commission to fail. So therefore, the legislature, legislative majorities can then draw the lines themselves. Thank you, Chairman. Nothing further.
Thank you, Senator O'Mara. I will note that the testimony gets uploaded to the Senate website as we receive it. So if you're interested in reviewing any of that, it's available instantaneously. And I myself, as the co-chair of this hearing, only got the witness list late last night. So we, sometimes it's not a conspiracy. It's just logistics working themselves through. I believe that's the last legislator with questions. So let me thank our first panel for their time and their input. And I will hand it over to Assemblymember Zabrowski for the second panel.
Thank you, Senator. Our second panel, I'll announce the names and give our folks running the hearing logistically the ability to get everybody up and running. We'll have Jennifer Wilson from the League of Women Voters, Arva Rice from the Urban League, Amy Torres from the Chinese American Planning Council, Michael Lee from the Brennan Center, and Jose Perez from Latino Justice. So when everybody is up and ready, we will start with Jennifer Wilson from the League of Women Voters.
Can you guys all see and hear me? Okay, fantastic.
We can.
Great. Well, thank you, Senators Jean R. and Hoilman, and Assemblymembers Rodriguez and Zabrowski for the opportunity to testify today. I think it's great that we're starting this process so early. My name is Jennifer Wilson. I'm the deputy director of the League of Women Voters of New York State. And you may remember, the League was actually one of the strong advocates in favor of the 2014 constitutional amendment that created the new redistricting commission. And we believe that the amendment was a significant improvement to the redistricting status quo that had the potential to fundamentally change elections in New York State. And we were not the only ones who believed this to be true. New York State voters were the ones who ultimately voted to approve the constitutional amendment. Although we realize that some of our good government partners may be seeking to amend this process, our overwhelming interest here is that the process, the people supported, be given the chance to work in the most transparent and inclusive manner possible. And we're primarily concerned with ensuring appropriate representation on the commission, keeping meetings open to the public and allowing for ample community input, and providing assistance to the commission in a manner that allows them to remain independent, but also empowers them to fulfill their mission. And in addition to those procedural concerns, we do recognize that there is an issue with the timing with respect to the release of the proposed maps and the June primary petitioning process. We don't believe that that needs to be a constitutional fix. We believe that can be done statutorily through the legislature to shorten the timeline for submitting the maps to the legislature. It doesn't have to be done through the constitution, especially considering that if we did do it through the constitution, that wouldn't be effective until January 1st of 2022. And at that point, it's almost too late to have that make any sort of impact. But outside of that, one of our chief concerns is still representation. And in June of this year, we had actually sent a letter to all legislators and commission members that are currently seated, currently seated commission members, urging them to consider the need for greater gender and racial diversity on the commission. Currently, there is only one woman and no Latinx members that have been appointed to the 10-member commission. And of course, we know that women make up more than 50% of New York's population. And Naleo has cited that we're the 20% of New Yorkers identifier as Latinx. We supported Naleo Education Fund and also Latino Justice in their call for Latinx representation and believe that in order for the commission to truly be representative of all New Yorkers, these final two commissioners must embody New York State's population. We are also very concerned over the undefined operational and procedural standards of the commission. We would urge the legislature to ensure that the commission adhere to open meetings laws and that the commission receive appropriate operational support that allows them to remain independent while they were to fulfill their mission. In 2020-2021 budget, you allocated $750,000 for the commission through the Department of State, which Senator O'Mara mentioned previously. And we were very happy to see this budget allocation. We were very confused as to why it was being made through the Department of State, considering that the commission is really supposed to work alongside the legislature, and there really isn't supposed to be any sort of oversight or input from the governor. We assume that the allocation would have been paid out through the legislature because of this. And the commission is responsible for doing pretty much everything itself, as Senator O'Mara mentioned, hiring its own staff, setting its own meetings, facilitating its own meeting space. And it could really benefit from some assistance from an already operational agency or the legislature. In California, their independent citizens' redistricting commission receives early assistance from the Secretary of State there. The California Secretary of State provides temporary staff and meeting space until the commission is fully up and running. And we think here in New York, that could work really well, too. So either you or the Department of State could offer some sort of meeting space, some sort of temporary staff, until the commission could be fully set up. And finally, I want to drive home the importance of assuring that the commission stays on target with regard to appointing its final members and getting started planning its meetings. Recent commissions, including the New York State Complete Count Commission and the New York State Public Campaign Financing Commission, encountered serious issues because of delays in their operations and a lack of staff assistance. I'm not going to belabor those points, but I will say both commissions started with the best of intentions and were derailed because they didn't have any staff and they had very little assistance. And that concludes my testimony. I want to thank you all again for holding this hearing, and we hope that you'll review our full recommendations. We're very excited to see what our first independent redistricting commission will produce. And we look forward to working alongside Latpor and the new commission on ensuring ample public participation, public input, transparency in this new process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I announced second, Arva Rice from the Urban League. I'm not sure I see that panelist up. I'll give it a second. If not, we'll go to the next person and come back.
Not present.
Not present, okay. Next up, we have Amy Torres from the Chinese American Planning Council.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you to chairs and members of both committees for the opportunity to testify today. I'm just making sure my volume is working. Yes, it appears that it is. For the opportunity to testify today, CPC is the nation's largest social services organization for Asian Americans. We bridge social services to social change for over 60,000 low-income immigrant and Asian-American and Pacific Islander New Yorkers each year. Our community members come from more than 40 countries, speaking 25 distinct languages and dialects. We provide over 50 contracted programs and 35 sites throughout Manhattan, Brooklyn, Queens. But we also serve a citywide population that comes through our sites there. Our services range from research, support, education, and ethnic identity empowerment. And these type of programs often consist of gaps in language, culture, and trust. In addition to our direct services work, CPC conducts nonpartisan civic engagement and education across our sites each year. We've been very humbled to join with many other organizations testifying today on census outreach, awareness, and education. And so for these reasons, we feel well poised to comment on the impacts of reapportionment on our communities. And again, we appreciate the opportunity to share our recommendations. I want to review a little bit some of our experience and some of what we've been looking at for self-response to date, and then share a few top-line recommendations of ours. The neighborhoods that CPC serves and the communities that we serve, these are communities that are historically marginalized and alienated from the political process. Before the census self-response period began, the Federal Bureau's own analysis found that Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders were 55% less likely to fill out the census, 38% unfamiliar with the census, and 41% concerned that the census would be used against them, forecasting that AAPIs would be the least likely of all immigrant groups to respond. And indeed, in our own census outreach and awareness efforts, we found that many of these sentiments have only deepened between the xenophobic and anti-immigrant policies that have come out at the federal level, particularly once the implementation of public charge happened, which was very close to the start of the self-response period, as well as the rising hate crimes and related incidents in the preceding and early months of the COVID-19 pandemic, where even poor cases were detected in the United States. Asian-Americans and particularly Chinese-Americans reported verbal harassment, public shunning, and customer discrimination at Asian ladder, Asian-serving businesses. So as of July 8th, the July 8th, 2020 reporting period, from the Bureau, Asians in New York City overall lagged below the citywide self-response average. The citywide response rate for Asians is growing over time, but majority Asian tracks in certain neighborhoods remain significantly below city and borough-wide averages. For example, in South Ocean Park and Richmond Hill, which is home to significant South Asian and Indo-Caribbean communities, response rates are over 10% behind city and borough-wide averages. We see similar lags in Brooklyn, which has, as a borough, has historically gone undercounted. And in neighborhoods like Bensonhurst and Sunset Park and Sheepshead Bay, they're also falling significantly behind citywide average, which is behind the nationwide average as well. And when we look outside New York City, we know that new migration trends in asylum refugee resettlement show that Asian-American communities are growing, particularly in regions where those communities haven't historically settled, so Greater Utica in Rome, Buffalo, Albany, Syracuse, and Rochester. And so we understand that the COVID-19 pandemic has caused both necessary operational and unintended And so we understand that the COVID-19 pandemic has caused both necessary operational and unintended delays to census operations and response rates. So we really want to issue, you know, two initial recommendations. One is encouraging the final appointment of remaining seats to be timely and more reflective of communities across the state and to commit to a robust public participation schedule. As already mentioned, this is a new process, it's untested, but the hope is that with the right composition and engagement of the public, the resulting map will more closely reflect the sentiment of voters. The racial and gender diversity of seated commissioners has raised flags for advocates, a lot of which has been mentioned already. And without tokenizing the identity of commissioners appointed to date, we hope that the existing appointees will consider filling the final spots with commissioners who are reflective, whether that's by geography, by residency, or experience of diverse and marginalized communities. That's impossible to do with two remaining seats. But as Ms. Williams mentioned in her testimony, there are also aides and staff engaged in this work and we hope for a transparent process so that those individuals more closely reflect communities of color and minority and marginalized identities. We also urge a commitment to a robust public participation, schedule, and process. At this moment, community-based organizations and civic associations are stretched extremely thin. These groups already face limited resources, even in the best of times, but even more so as austerity budgets have forced many of our organizations in response to the economic downturn to downsize. And as these groups are meeting rising service demands and priorities in their communities, we're finding less and less capacity to be able to challenge decisions and weigh in in the public process. So we really encourage, as many of my colleagues earlier testified, a process that invites the community in in ways that are easy for them. And that may mean, you know, going beyond the minimum number of geographic hearings to not only meet those required geographic minimums, but also to bring together community and interest groups that have been deeply involved to date. The community surveys that happened during the Unity Map process, which were described earlier, come to mind. Other organizations like CPC were part of the Asian-American Community Coalition on Redistricting and Democracy, the Accord Coalition. And these really invited the public in in ways where we could block by block understand what the process would mean for us and put in meaningful engagement, not just from experts, but from actual community members themselves. So we're thrilled to witness this new process. We appreciate the opportunity to testify and we're humbled to do so amongst so many great and amazing advocates. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Michael Lee from the Brennan Center.
Great. Thank you, thank you to the committees for this opportunity to testify. New York will face a number of challenges when maps are redrawn in 2021, both because of COVID and because it will be using a new system to draw maps for the first time. And I want to talk about four challenges in particular. The first is, as several other people have mentioned, redistricting will be delayed because of COVID. States normally get the census data that they use to draw districts in February or March after the census. That schedule has been pushed back because of census delays and it potentially could be pushed back further because of the ongoing COVID pandemic elsewhere in the country. But right now, what those delays mean is that states won't get the data until mid-June to July of 2021, which means that map drawing effectively will not be able to start until late summer at the very earliest. That will make it virtually impossible for the commission to submit meaningful draft maps by the September 15th deadline in the Constitution. And it may be hard for the commission to meet the January 15th deadline for submitting final maps to the legislature. And those dates may need to be adjusted in some way. And also, because the New York process is iterative, the legislature could reject the first set of maps. If they are not approved, then the commission will have to draw a second set of maps. And it may also, it will have time to do that, but that will bump up very closely against the filing deadline for the 2022 primary. And that may need to be moved in an outside world. It's also possible that the date of the primary might have to be moved or you might want to consider that to allow a robust redistricting process to take place. And the reason that you particularly want a robust redistricting process relates to the second challenge, which is that New York has to unwind some fairly bad maps from last decade, particularly in the legislature. Where on the Senate side, there's a significant bias in favor of Republicans on the map because some speakers have already talked about the underpopulation of districts upstate, the overpopulation of districts in the New York City area. The map was legal, but it pushed things to the very edge of legality. And by some measures, New York City could support up to two additional Senate seats to reduce the aggressiveness of those population variances. So something similar happened on the Assembly side, but you know, it's a little, it didn't really affect control of the body as much. The third challenge is significant demographic change in New York. New York has grown this past decade, but barely compared to other states. The state, in fact, has lost over 620,000 white residents, while the black population has grown a little bit. The state, the fact that the state is growing at all really is due to the increases in its Latino and its Asian populations, mostly in the New York City and the downstate regions of the state. Right now, the state is projected to lose one congressional district. It may, it would lose more if it weren't for that Latino and Asian growth. The state's electorate has also become considerably more diverse. The white citizen voting age population has decreased by about 50,000. Meanwhile, you have about 200,000 more black voters, 290,000 Asian voters, and a whopping 540,000 Latino voters. In other words, all of the increase in eligible voters this last decade was attributed to people of color. Which gets to the fourth challenge. Well, let me stop there. Because of that, you know, I think it's important to get public input and that's something that can happen right now. When undoing these gerrymanders and figuring out what the map should look like, it's really important to get public input and public feedback. And that's something that the commission could absolutely do now and start hearings around the state in order to get that public input. The fourth challenge, which I will mention just briefly, is to make sure that the commission is robustly funded to be able to do its work. I realize that's a special challenge in the current fiscal landscape, but the process will not work, especially for the first time out for the commission, if the commission doesn't have the resources to have field hearings and to have adequate staff and to be able to respond to the community. So with that, thank you again for this opportunity to testify. We're happy to follow up on any of these issues.
Thanks very much. Next up, we have Jose Perez from Latino Justice.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to testify, Senator Jean Ariz, Hoilman, Assemblyman Zabrowski, and Rodriguez and other elected officials. On behalf of Latino Justice Perldav, we were founded, some of you may remember us more, as the Puerto Rican Legal Defense and Education Fund, founded back in 1972. Democracy, civic engagement, access for Latinos to be able to participate in the electoral and democratic process have been cornerstones of our work since our founding almost 50 years ago. I think you heard references in the first panel to litigation involving the application of Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act to redistricting here in New York City. That was lawsuits brought by a group of racial civil rights groups known as the Unity Coalition. Let Perldav back in that day was among the leaders in those two lawsuits, Herena Valentin versus Koch, which dealt with the city's attempt to adapt new municipal districts without first getting pre-clearance from the Department of Justice. The courts enjoined the primary days before the September primary back in 2011. We have a long history of continuing to engage in voting rights and redistricting litigation. After the last round, after in 2011, we participated again with our unity partners at the Asian-American Legal Defense Fund and the Medgar Rivers Center Law for Social Justice in joining and intervening in the Favors lawsuit, again, where Latfor had not yet drawn congressional districts. Our Unity Map, which was largely a joint, community-driven effort, respecting communities of color, communities of interest, not attempting to disenfranchise, but working united to preserve our communities and afford them their opportunity to elect candidates of their own choosing, was largely adopted by the federal court back in 2011-12. There was a second phase to that Favors litigation, or Favors 2, as it was called, which I think Michael referred to, again, the attempt to add a Senate district. A 63rd Senate district was drawn, notwithstanding that all the population growth was downstate and in the Bronx. And that's where an additional Senate district should have been drawn. However, it was drawn up in the Albany Capital District area, although the court ultimately sustained that district. Again, it was, as I think Michael alluded to, on the cutting edge of passing a constitutional legal muster. Going from there, so in terms of going forward, and you've heard already this repeatedly, and I want to thank Jennifer on behalf of the League of Women Voters for the letter that they sent and who made reference to this. The fact that our elected leadership has failed to appoint or nominate yet one Latino among the first Latino eight appointments to this supposed so-called Independent Redistricting Commission is a travesty. How could this happen in today's day and age? It's inexcusable. I appreciate and applaud the efforts of some of those that are on this call, sitting on the panel, Assemblyman Rodriguez, Sarpuda, and others who have joined with some of the other panelists. You heard from Juan Rosa and the Naleo Educational Fund. You'll hear from Eddie Cuesta from Dominicanos USA. We have joined together to express our outrage and the failure of our elected leadership to recognize and include Latinos in this political process. And that's what it is, it's not independent, it's political. Let's get real, let's change the name, as Susan Lerner mentioned earlier. We have joined with our partners in sending letters. We've identified, we've done the homework of looking for the proverbial needle in the haystack, looking for those, are there independent Latinos in New York State? Well, we found at least five eminently qualified that we've identified and provided to the leadership and to the commission. And we urge members of both houses, the leadership, to consider and do everything in your power so that the existing eight members fairly evaluate, assess, and vote to support the appointment of a Latino to this commission. Failure to have a Latino, and you have two independent spots right now, they should be permitted to testify, they should be included in order that we have a voice in this process. The other things I wanted to mention are there are some changes, again, that were touched upon by the first panel, Susan Lerner. I know Common Quarters are supporting. One thing that was not mentioned in terms of changing some of this outdated old language in the Constitution, there is currently a term called excluding aliens, still in language in Article 3, Section 5. As a Latino Civil Rights Legal Defense Fund uniquely cognizant of the diversity of immigrant statuses of our communities, we want to ensure that all New Yorkers are counted and included during reapportionment and not limited to voting age population. The Supreme Court included that everyone counts, one person, one vote, as Justice Ginsburg eloquently cited in the Evanwell case. So we urge that that language, excluding aliens, which is more reflective of the administration and the politics emanating from Washington, that that should not be countenanced by a state as inclusive and diverse as New York. So again, I would urge transparency, I would urge inclusion, respectful of communities of color and communities of interest. And notwithstanding the Shelby County striking down of the Section 5 pre-clearing, the principles of the Voting Rights Act, Section 2, still apply. And communities of color and minority communities' rights must be respected. Otherwise, organizations such as Latino Justice will continue to be in business and back in the courts. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I want to thank the panel for your testimony today and for your insights. We do have an assembly member who wishes to ask a question, Assembly Member Harvey Epstein.
Again, I want to thank all the panelists, a really good question. And just Jose, to you, what do you think we need to do to push to ensure that Latinos get appropriate representation on the commission? And, you know, are there things that you think we otherwise should be doing to ensure the diversity of representation across this state to ensure that we include those voices that are being excluded? Is it a letter to the governor? Is it something that you guys need us to do? Or do you feel like you've been pushing on your own and you think that you're going to be successful?
We, again, there have been letters sent by, and not just Latino groups, again, groups such as the League of Women Voters also reached out and have identified this. Assemblyman Epstein, what I think is, again, was alluded to in the earlier panel, in the future, inclusion in the process. Why weren't we invited to be part of the discussions on these things? If this is going to be an independent redistricting commission, then maybe we should revisit, you know, this is not an independent redistricting commission if the political leaders are appointing the individuals. Are we going to be part of that discussions? We can make suggestions. We did the work and we've identified candidates, whom I understand are being evaluated and perhaps in being considered. But given it's the existing eight members that vote upon them, you as an elected official on behalf of your constituents, communicate with the existing commissioners, they have to do that. Communicate this to Speaker Hasty, technically the leader of your house, that this is imperative, that they consider and answer, you know, identify suitable candidates. We did homework, we spent hours and we searched and we found at least five. So we made it easy, we identified people, lawyers, I'm a lawyer, right, doctors, community leaders. It's imperative that they be able to bring their life experience. The other part of it is language, I mean, everything is in English. Where is the bilingual, we're going to be multicultural, language accessibility has to be recognized. Notice of these proceedings, notice of when their review of candidates being considered has to be multi-culturally sensitive and language accessible.
So you're saying that the materials that they're publishing are not accessible in multiple languages?
Well, if they were, I mean, this is more going forward, again, with the initial appointments, you know, there were no public notices that the speaker or the Senate leaders were considering who they were counting, where their meetings were, we were not invited, if there were meetings or considerations. So that's something, were members of the House, members of the Assembly, or the Senate included, or hey, it's to weigh in or to do this? Probably, I think not. So if you're, again, if you were not aware of that, then clearly you were not apprised or saying, can you make suggestions? It should be an inclusive process. Folks, the members of the Assembly and the Senate should be able to make recommendations and you all, representing your constituents and hearing from advocates and organizations such as ours, can share our insights or comments or make suggestions and really make this a true democratic participatory process.
So you're saying some kind of like public notice for, hey, this is a commission, we want applicants to express the diversity of New York and have a deadline for people to apply, to submit, and then have a pool that they could go to?
But that would be more akin to a true independent, citizen-independent commission, much as California and some other states have adopted, where folks can apply publicly. But if it's going to be in the existing structure, again, then our leaders need to, again, I think, need to hear from their constituents and their members.
Right, well, very helpful. Thank you for testifying and being here today.
Good to see you again, my friend.
You too. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Next, we have Senator Gustavo Rivera.
Thank you, Senator. Let me turn on my video here. It's not allowing me to start the video, but I guess I'll just speak until it does. Y'all can hear me, correct?
Yes.
Good. All right, so this is actually to, there we go. This is to, I guess, to CPC, Latino Justice, and Brennan Center, I guess you can all chime in. You mentioned both, we're talking about Latino, Latinx community, Latino communities, and AAIPI communities, but also some of their undercounts, that's obviously a concern that was shared by the first panel and I certainly share it, the communities that I represent, the undercount is definitely, we're behind. But can you say more about how that may affect the existing districts in the future? And also, so future ones that are drawn that retain kind of core of prior districts? Can you talk a little bit about how that would break down, I mean CPC maybe first?
Sure, I can go first. Thank you, Senator Rivera. So in our testimony, we pulled some analysis that the Asian-American Federation had done, which was very helpful to our understanding of where accounts are to date. And I mentioned some neighborhoods in Queens where the count is significantly behind the citywide self-response rate. And that same area where we have a high and dense population of South Asians, Indian-Americans, and Indo-Caribbean Americans is also a place where some of those, the core parts of those communities are actually split into four or five assembly districts. And so when we think about the potential for undercount, the existing core of, the core of existing districts, and understanding that, you know, some of the undercounted communities are on the margins of those districts, the undercount serves to further marginalize them so that they continue that fracturing effect. And so I don't have the analysis of what the full count of other communities in that district is in front of me right now. But I think our concern is that without a full public participation process, where, you know, one, for those of us who are continuing to work on get-out-the-count efforts to make sure that those same organizations are the count efforts, to make sure that those same organizations remain at the table and those same community groups remain at the table, so that when we talk about line by line where these communities live, that there's a full public record that reflects. And also, we need to understand that many of these communities that are facing undercounts, it's also because of a lot of, you know, historic displacement that these communities have experienced. But there's also going to be significant displacement as a fallout of the COVID-19 pandemic.
Gotcha. Anybody else want to chime in? Obviously, you've covered it. You've covered it well, Ms. Torres. Thank you, and thank you all for being part of this process. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Rivera. In the absence of a member of the Assembly, we also have Senator Tom O'Meara.
Thank you, Chairman. I just have a follow-up question for, I think it was Jose who was speaking regarding candidates that have been put forward for the two open commission spots and who's evaluating those. I'm not aware of any candidates that have been put forward by any of the groups that are testifying here today. But I guess I would ask if you know who those individuals are that have been submitted and who they've been submitted to?
So Senator, Dominicanos USA, Naleo Educational Fund, and Latino Justice identified five. We issued a letter, I believe in early June, again, critiquing the failure to have a Latino appointed to the commission. As part of that, it's a public press release. A letter was sent to both the Puerto Rican Hispanic Task Force and the legislative leadership in both the Assembly and the Senate, and the governor as well. And in part of that letter, we also identified five candidates that we had vetted and cleared. So when I say perhaps, in terms of, I don't want to get into semantics, but we identified, put together a shortlist that we had already identified and cleared five individuals who are independent registered voters, non-republican, non-democratic, and identified these as potential candidates for consideration. And it's my understanding that the leadership has been, those names have been shared and are considering them. But that name, that release, that letter, the list, that is public. So you should have, happy to send it to you. It's publicized by all the organizations that I mentioned earlier.
Okay. Do you think it would have been a good idea to perhaps have those candidates maybe testify at this hearing today?
Possibly. You know, again, the candidates themselves, and when I say, just to go back, when I say the leadership, it was sent to both the majority and the minority leadership. And we've had discussions with both the minority, the Republican leadership, as well as the Senate and the Assembly Democratic leadership. So it's both houses. This is not a one-sided, given that these two final spots to be filled. Whether these candidates, given if they are not being considered or doing that, would they share, I think, the outrage that I expressed earlier, that not a Latino could do that, to convey that? If you need repetition, then that would clearly be helpful.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm Seth, Chairman.
Thank you, Senator.
All right. Well, I want to thank the panel again for your testimony today. In the absence of any other senators or Assemblymembers, Senator Janarez, I'll kick it over to you for the third panel.
Thank you, Assemblymember, for our third and final panel of the day. We have Jeff Weiss from New York Law School's Census and Redistricting Institute, Eddie Questa from Dominicanos USA, Tom Speaker from Re:Invent Albany, and Rachel Bloom from Citizens Union. We will begin with Jeff Weiss.
Okay. I thought I was live on screen. Sorry. Thanks very much for this opportunity. Let me just get my screen adjusted here a bit. Well, it's a pleasure to be addressing you this morning on redistricting. Again, my name is Jeff Weiss. I am a senior fellow and edging professor at New York Law School, where I'm heading up a new institute on census and redistricting. We've created a redistricting roundtable to engage the public, veterans, experts, and new organizations with everything redistricting, especially with education, training, and involving the public. It's been my privilege in the past to have worked for five Assembly speakers and four Democratic Senate leaders, with last four as a staffer or counsel. And it's a pleasure to be providing information to you. I am not advocating or presenting a particular point of view, but want to suggest a few ideas in light of the COVID delay, caused delay in the census delivery and the state constitution. I will submit a written paper, but I'll also submit a national campaign, a legislative research, recently published redistricting red book, which I was a co-author and co-editor. That's a letter, staff primer on redistricting, will answer many of legal questions that came up earlier in this hearing. And I'll also provide a copy of a recently published primer on the New York State redistricting process that was New York Law School published last month, that walks people through the current constitutional scheme. Since the pandemic hit and the Census Bureau has had to delay its census-taking process and the expected delay in providing redistricting data to the states, I've also been working with other states similarly situated, including California, New Jersey, Virginia, which have much tighter timeframes than New York. I'm going to suggest that there are three different options that the legislature can consider. The first is to work with and urge the commission to move up deadlines without a constitutional amendment and to enact chapter laws that will accommodate the schedule. A second approach could be to develop a basic constitutional amendment to deal with some of the calendar dates. And then a third option would be a much more comprehensive approach to amend the Constitution, to change the 2022 dates involved, make other reforms that, as others before me mentioned, could include creating a bipartisan commission with a final authority and a neutral tiebreaker similar to the New Jersey scheme. Second, creating a commission with final authority and being fully independent of the legislature, similar to California. Other changes can include prioritizing the criteria used for redistricting, changing the commission's rules on voting, adding the prisoner reallocation law to the Constitution, changing the standard of judicial review to make, verify the burdens of proof when challenging redistricting plans. And there are numerous other changes that could be made if the thought is to go beyond simply fixing the dates. In light of the delay, the current plan will not provide the data to the state until sometime in June or July 2021. Under the current framework, this gives the commission only five months to submit its first set of plans, leaving the commission with only about 45 days to complete its work or as soon as practicable thereafter, in the words of the Constitution. The commission can expedite its work after the data arrives next summer, still meet deadlines in 2021, but make changes in the political calendar. My colleague and friend Todd Breitbart, a former state senate redistricting staffer, and I have looked at the calendar and would suggest that if the dates for the commission and the legislature could be moved up a bit, that a primary can still be held on June 28th, where the first day to circulate petitions would be March 25th, the last date for filing petitions, on April 19th, leaving a 25-day petition period, reducing the number of signatures required, and having a primary on June 28th. The congressional primary in 2012 was in the spring. This commission amendment was adopted in 2012 originally and approved 2014 with knowledge that there was going to be a problem. So I think I've worked out a schedule that, you know, could accommodate this. You can find a much more detailed analysis of all the suggestions others and I have made about constitutional amendments in a book chapter called "New York's Broken Constitution" from the 2016 SUNY Press Book. The title of our chapter was "These Seats Cannot Be Saved", where we looked at the entire recent history of redistricting in New York and ways to make further changes. Please don't hesitate to call on me for further assistance as you develop either chapter amendments or revisions to the 2014 amendment. And it's a pleasure seeing so many old colleagues and friends again. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. It's great to have your experience, the opinion on this matter. Eddie Questa from Dominicanos USA is next.
Greetings, and thank you, Chair Janarez Rodriguez Holman Zabrowski, and fellow committee members, for providing us with the opportunity to testify in this important issue. My name is Eddie Questa, Secretary Director of Dominicanos USA, a nonpartisan and unpartisan organization committed to the civic, social, and economic integration of Dominican-American into all facets of the American life. Thus advocate and strive to ensure that every US citizen is able to freely and easily exercise their civic rights, realize their full potential, and capitalize on the opportunities the US has to offer. Our contribution to making this vision a reality begins with our direct and grassroots work in the Dominican-American community. Dominicanos USA is here today because the New York State redistricting process is intimately tied to our representative democracy, which is essential to the progress of a growing yet potent population. We might pick up a significant portion of New York's largest and diverse Latino population. According to the 2017, 2017 estimate from the Census Bureau, there are over 2 million Dominicans or people of Dominican descent living in the United States. In New York State and New York City, the population estimates are 872,000 and 720,000 respectively. The 720,000 Dominican in New York City account for more than one of every nine city residents, 12%, and they also account for 29% of the Latino in the city. The 355,000 Dominican in the Bronx account for nearly one of every four, 24%, and almost half of 43% of the Latino borough residents, making the Bronx the US county with far the largest Dominican population. Considering that maybe two of the Dominican population in New York and of the contribution Latinos as a whole to our great state, we are clearly dismayed to hear that not a single Latino was appointed to New York State new independent redistricting commission, as has been said in this panel. It is essential that this commission is as diverse as practically possible as stated in its legal guidelines because representation without such an essential democracy process will help produce political mass, which provide Latinos with a fair opportunity to elect the candidates of their choice, both for candidates that look like them and candidates that share their experiences. In an attempt to remedy this oversight, we join, as was mentioned in this panel, in the previous panel, with our partners at the Naleo Educational Fund and Latino Justice Peldaf, at the request of the Puerto Rican and Hispanic Task Force, to find and recommend eminently qualified Latinos, candidates, to fill the remaining two seats open on the commission. After an intensive two months of scouring the entire state, we found five wonderful candidates and have shared them with both minority and majority leader in both legislative houses, as mentioned previously. This process wasn't that easy, and we believe that the current legal structure disproportionately limits the appointment and participation of Latino to this commission. Dominicanos USA believes that the application and selection process for members of a redistricting commission, as noted in the body of law, that from the IRC must result in a commission with reflect the geography, racial, ethics, gender, and age diversity of the political jurisdiction. The current qualification makes it nearly impossible for Dominicans to participate directly in this process. While we firmly state by the importance of appointing candidates that have no conflict of interest, we do find that there should be some exception to this rule. Thus, we urge the first aid commissioners to select qualified Latinos for the remaining seats. Lastly, considering the current state of our public health in the COVID-19 pandemic, it is important that the commission make the 12 hearing, it is mandated to hold accessible to all communities. We hope that this can be done virtually in order to mitigate the spread of the COVID-19 virus, if an in-person hearing are not possible in the future. Historically, as you may know, the redistricting process has been intentionally utilized to press the electoral power of communities of interest, like Dominicans. We have an opportunity to help ensure fairest redistricting process by appointing more Latinos to the commission and by making the process as accessible as possible to all community in New York State. We have been at the ground to make sure that the Dominican community is involved in our nation's democracy process and look forward to doing the same for redistricting. Thank you again for this opportunity to testify. We know you share our goals of a fair redistricting process that allow all New Yorkers a meaningful opportunity to participate as a result in maps that provide underrepresented New Yorkers an opportunity to elect the candidates of their choice. We look forward to working with you to achieve this important goal. Thank you again.
Thank you, Eddie. Next, we have Tom Speaker from Re:Invent Albany.
Good morning. My name is Tom Speaker. I'm a policy analyst for Re:Invent Albany, Re: Invent Albany Advocates for Open and Accountable Government in New York State. We thank the Senate and Assembly for holding this hearing today on redistricting, the first hearing on this topic for the 2022 cycle, and for all the hearings we'll be holding over the coming week. So today, we call on the legislature to focus their efforts on helping the redistricting commission function properly rather than on making major structural changes to the redistricting process. While we recognize that the redistricting process needs improvement, the earliest constitutional changes would take effect after voter approval in November 2021, which we believe would be too far along in the process of drawing district lines. The first passage of a constitutional amendment would need to be done by the legislature in the next couple of weeks. While the public discussion around redistricting has only started in earnest with this hearing today, major changes to our redistricting policy should only be made after the public has had sufficient time to weigh in. The constitutional amendment passed in 2014 is not perfect, but it was approved by the voters and is the only feasible framework for drawing lines for 2022, given the current time limitations. That said, we believe that statutory changes could and should be made to the redistricting commission's timeframes to address the consolidated June primary date and delays in census collection data related to COVID-19. These ministerial changes can be made via statute and would provide the commission guidance on how to proceed during the cycle while ensuring adequate time for public hearings and review. We also support the Legal Women Voters of New York State's request to ensure that the commission is fully equipped with both funding and staff and that the funding was made available as released as soon as possible. There should also be greater clarity around the application of the open meetings law and freedom of information law to the commission. Lastly, the commission must work to appoint its final two non-affiliated commissioners so that planning can finally begin. It is important for public trust that the commission begin its work soon and lay an open roadmap for how this redistricting cycle will unfold. So while discussion of changes is warranted, we believe that these issues should be considered when there is more time for thoughtful public discussion and review. Changing redistricting midstream would be disruptive and potentially damage public confidence in the process. A consideration of larger structural changes should only be made, more time for public input. That's all we have. So thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, Tom. And last, but certainly not least, Rachel Bloom from Citizens Union.
Hello. Thank you for having me. I know that you've heard a lot of people already today, and I'm going to try and not be as repetitive. So I'm representing Citizens Union, and we are very excited to be here, talking about for the first time in this cycle about redistricting with you. But I'm sure there are many more to come, particularly right now with so much that's going on. We are thankful for you for having this hearing and shining a light on it. So eight years ago, when lawmakers placed on the ballot the biggest reform to redistricting in decades, received the decisive support of New Yorkers, and it created a more fair and open redistricting process. Having said all of that, you know, the amendment also called for extensive public hearings and the release of maps and other data, which would allow members of the public to draw their own maps, thus fostering public participation. As we head into this process for the first time, it's exciting, but there are also challenges we face. And I'm going to try and run through these. First, as we obviously all know, it's a new and yet untested process. We have to establish the commission, including staffing. We are excited that the legislature allocated $750,000 for the budget and urge them to get going with creation and staffing and appointing an executive director. We call on the commissioners to reach an agreement on their picks as soon as possible. And as they consider filling the two remaining vacancies, we note that according to the Constitution, the commission should reflect the diversity of the residents of the state. And with that, we advocate, we amplify those who spoke before us of noting that there's only one woman on the commission and no Latinx commissioners. only one woman on the commission and no Latinx commissioners, which does not at the moment seem reflective of New York State. Next, I'm actually going to skip ahead to something, and I will go back to this. I have time. Our third, what was originally, our most important point is that we oppose any process which seeks to amend the state constitution to address the 2022 redistricting cycle. The 2014 revision was a result of a long process of deliberation, public input, and media coverage. Changing the constitution without public notice during a last-minute session would be counter to the objective of an open and fair redistricting process, especially since timeline problems, we believe, can be solved through legislative action and do not need to happen merely through constitutional amendment. The current redistricting process is not perfect. There are things that we had hoped the 2014 amendment would have included, more improvements to the process, but we very much supported the final version as an important opportunity to fix a rigged system. We believe the public, which strongly supported the 2014 amendment, should be given the chance to see those amendments implemented for the first time. A thoughtful debate on the merits and drawbacks of the process should follow ahead of the next redistricting process. Changes should not be made during a redistricting process in the current highly rushed timeline. We are especially concerned by any attempts to eliminate the bipartisan nature of the current redistricting process, either by changing the special voting rules in the commission or the need a majority in the legislature in case of one-party control. That would contradict the intent of the 2014 amendment. We have advocated for fair redistricting for many decades, during which time we have watched as one party or the other sought to reduce by gerrymander the voting rights of supporters of the opposing party. The goal of fair redistricting is for every person's vote to have equal value, regardless of party affiliation. We are concerned that any process which seeks to amend the constitution at this moment would create confusion, limit public input, and will not influence the timeline. The earliest that an amendment can take effect is January 1, 22, well-passed when the commission is required to submit its preliminary plan for public comment and on the same day when it is supposed to present its first plan to the legislature. The commission must be able to operate with full knowledge of what criteria it needs to follow. If amendments are placed on the ballot, the commission will not know until November which constitutional provisions would be in fact. If there is a change in January, the commission would have to operate with different criteria and possibly produce new maps. The tight timing would greatly limit, if not exclude, public input on revised plans. And if there are pending amendments, we doubt members of the public would be able to provide meaningful input to the process. This may also compound the risk of lawsuits, both during and after the process. We fear this will delay the process rather than expedite it. And with that, I will be submitting my written testimony, which has more in it, which cannot be contained in these five minutes, and I just ended by urging the legislature to keep the redistricting process set forth in the 2014 amendment intact for the upcoming redistricting cycle. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I go to questions, let me just point out the irony for those who say that the current process was subject to great public input and a vote. Anything that would happen now would also be subject to the exact same process. It would be at least a year plus before the public would get to opine on it, and it would be the same vote that would be known in November of 21, even if it would take effect in January, so the commission would have full knowledge for two months about what the changes would be. With that, Senator Gustavo Rivera, I believe, is first on the list.
Thank you, sir. Unmute. All right. Thank you all for being here. Jeff, it is good to see you, and I've worked with this gentleman before, and obviously good to see the rest of the panelists. Eddie, good to see you as well. But Jeff, I wanted for you to, you took some time during your testimony to talk about the timeline that, you know, because obviously we are under constraints as far as what the timeline would be, and I want you to go a little bit deeper into that, because obviously our choices are limited because of the, because of when the primary is set and what the amendment says. I voted against it. That's neither here nor there. It is reality. So tell us a little bit more about the timeline that you think could potentially work as far as I would break down.
That's a great question. Without going to the constitutional amendment, you know, issue, I think the simplest way of approaching things is to first persuade the commission, once it's up and running, to work as expeditiously as possible, to have everything it can possibly do ready to go at the time the state receives the census data, where if Congress approves, will be no later than July 30 of 2021 and possibly, probably earlier in July, if not late June. The Census Bureau is still working out that schedule. Having said that, if the data comes as a worst, you know, late-case scenario on July 30, the commission needs to upload and analyze the data. It needs to work at the king's. It takes a few weeks to do that, to look at the malapportionment of current districts and the new populations, determine where districts are over or under the ideal population size. Then it's, the commission is required to hold a series of 12 hearings throughout the state. I look back at recent schedules.
Sorry to interrupt, sorry to interrupt. So that 12 hearings, that is a requirement that exists in law or in the?
In the constitution. The actual cities and counties are listed in the constitution, and this is similar to the hearings that were held 10 years ago and 20 years ago, when each series of hearings went for about two and a half weeks. Although to be more expedited in 2021, I calendared out that if hearings can start in September, late September, that you can hold 12 hearings, or you can do Manhattan, Bronx, Staten Island, five days in a row. You can do every other day, or Rochester, Syracuse, Buffalo, Albany in four days straight. That's how it's been done in the past. So you can work with the month and get, develop public input, develop plans, and drawing plans, you know, is not that difficult, given the software that's out there. It's just a matter of applying the public input and weighing, I think, the tremendous amount of greater public involvement that we'll see in 2021, but to develop the first iteration draft plan at some point by November, December of next year, and then have the, send the plan to the legislature if the commission can agree on a plan, and even have a second plan, let's say, if the first plan could be done in November, and if the legislature can meet, either adopt it and send it to the governor, or if it's rejected by either the legislature or the governor, then go back in December and try it again. But at some point, to have a plan in place, signed by the governor, that would allow, this would be for really, I guess, February final enactment, so that then the boards of elections can then redraw the election districts to comport with the new assembly districts, and then begin a primary process for June 28 primary date, beginning on March 25. You need at least about a month for the boards of elections to administer the process. I went back and looked at the 1982 process, when both petitions and dates were collapsed. I looked back at the 2020 schedule. So it's fast track, but as many of the speakers talked about, the more that's done at the front end to gain input, to reach out to people, to, you know, get the, you know, get the sense of what various communities are looking at, this could be done rather quickly.
I wanted to make sure, we only have, we only have 20 seconds, so I wanted to say, I wanted to make sure that we get all of that on the record, since it is clear that we're going to have a very compressed timeline, and we want to make sure that we, that we move it expeditiously so that we can do all these things. It's possible to do it. It's tight, but it is possible to do so. In your expert opinion, that is the case.
And I don't think the constitution could be amended to impact 2021 calendar dates since any amendment couldn't go into effect until January 1, 2022.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay. Some Members, Zabrowski, do you have any?
Not at this point.
Okay, we have Senator Tom O'Mara.
Thank you, Chairman. That was Mr. Weiss that was just answering questions at the end there, correct?
That's correct.
Can you, for the public's benefit, you mentioned the redistricting software and capabilities that are out there today and that it can be done quickly. Can you just generally explain to myself and to the public just exactly how this software works and how quickly these lines can actually be drawn now?
Well, sure. There are three major commercial vendors that have developed redistricting software, and when I say software, you get the census data from the Census Bureau. It's called the PL94171 file. It basically provides all of the racial and age data for every election district in the state. You upload that data into the software, and the software enables you to look at the current districts, to see all of the racial and ethnic numbers that comport with each district, each election district, senate district, or assembly district, and then allows you, using geographic information systems, GIS science, to move populations around so that you're changing the district populations, and as you do that, you get to see the racial, ethnic, and age differences as you change them, so that you draw districts that comport with one person, one vote, that all districts be equal in size roughly, the Voting Rights Act, so that you know what the racial competition districts look like, and you also get a sense to see, you know, other kinds of factors that you could add to the software. An experienced line drawer, of which there are very few, you know, can draw a map in a matter of days. It's just a matter of how much advanced work has gone into the process, how much politics and policymaking goes into what the line drawer is being, you know, told to weigh. But it's not a process that takes a month to draw a map, a relatively short period of time, but again, it depends on the circumstances of what is going on then, what needs to be done, whether there are policy or political differences that needs to be, you know, that need to be worked out. But I am talking about doing that in a fast track.
Right, right. Now, you didn't mention the criteria of, or the data point of party affiliation. Does that not go into that system?
You look at party affiliation when you do racial voting analysis to determine whether you need to comport with the Voting Rights Act to maintain or draw districts that are required based on racially polarized voting patterns. So you need to look back at 10 years of primaries and general elections. So the partisan data there does play in. It's not, it is not prohibited to use partisan data. It's not prohibited to use any kind of data. That's up to the policymaking body as to what data it wants to consider. However, all data that goes into the redistricting machinery should be made public and divulged so that the public knows what factors went into the line drawing. If you're hiding some kind of a data, then you're making some kind of a mistake.
Thank you. At the first panel, you know, I asked a question about the money not being released that's been appropriated for this. Would you agree that the sooner that money gets released to set up the commission and that staff and executive directors get hired, that these final two commissioners get chosen, and that they begin their work? Is imperative?
It's imperative, from an objective point of view, that things get moving along, because we say that the, you know, the longer you take to wait, the harder it is to catch up. But again, I just want to, you know, reiterate that I'm not making recommendations to the legislature. I'm just giving you examples based on my experience that early planning leads to, you know, better result.
Okay. Now, that $750,000 for this commission was appropriated in this year's budget that was passed in the first week of April. That money's been appropriated, and it's up to the majorities of each house of the legislature to get that money released. That has not been done. Do you think the later we go in this, we might potentially need more resources for the need to hire more staff to do more work in less time?
That's hard to say, because the money that was appropriated goes through April 1 of next year. There will need to be an entirely new appropriation for the fiscal year beginning 2021, 22. The unknown factor that none of us anticipated at all prior to mid-March was the, if possible, need to work remotely. We have no idea what the future holds and whether we'll be back at our offices next year. That would add up costs in terms of more hearings like this. Then again, it can, it can save costs by not having to travel to 12 cities, but that's a factor to be thinking about. But it might also cost that each staff person, each legislator, have her or his own computer and software, and each software license can cost about $1,000 each. So there's factors that had been planned for. We don't know yet.
Well, right now, the commission isn't staffed, doesn't have resources, so they can't even make a choice of which software to purchase, to use. And I would just note that I think it's imperative that this money get released and the commission get on with its work. But I thank you for testifying here today, Mr. Weiss and the rest of the panelists here. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you, Senator O'Mara. Let me just point out, too, that I believe the trigger for the hirings and the rest of the work the commission needs to do is the establishment of the commission, and until the final two members are selected, I'm not sure that that can proceed regardless, but I do share your view that the commission needs to start moving expeditiously given the tight timeframe we all have. I believe that wraps up the hearing. Let me thank all our panelists, all my colleagues, my co-chairs, Assemblymember Zabrowski, Assemblymember Rodriguez, Senator Hoilman. This is certainly something we're going to be talking a lot more about as the weeks and months unfold, and we'll have the opportunity for even more input. With that, I would like to ask my Senate co-chairs, Senator Hoilman, to give some closing remarks, and then we'll pass it over to Assemblymember Zabrowski.
Thank you, Senator Gennares, and to my assembly colleagues, thank you so much. You know, this is an unprecedented time for us, but it's also unprecedented in that the Senate has never actually had hearings leading up to a redistricting in this manner previous. So I'm very proud of our participation today, Senator Gennares, and looking forward to putting deed behind the words of so many of our panelists today, who gave us an expert insight into one of the most fundamental issues involving our democracy, whether every person's vote counts equally. Thank you very much, Senator Gennares.
Thank you, Senator Gennares and Senator Hoilman. I'd like to give my co-chair for this hearing, Assemblymember Robert Rodriguez, who chairs the Task Force on Demographic Research and Reimportionment, an opportunity for a statement.
Thank you, Assemblymember Zabrowski, and thank you to my Senate colleagues for the opportunity to have this very important discussion about redistricting and the process, and certainly, you know, the comments that were made about diversity are important, I think, both to the Senate majority as well as to the Assembly majority, and certainly, and something that we are committed to enacting throughout this process and endeavor to meet the, and respond to the comments that were made through actions and hopefully through the final appointments. But more importantly, you know, we'd be remiss if we didn't look at the inputs to the process that we are evaluating now. The census and our ability to respond and get good data will inform our ability to make good decisions with respect to redistricting that actually reflect one person, one vote. And as we talk about the efforts around census, you know, we have to recognize that we are still below the national average in terms of response and still have appropriations outstanding to help us to achieve those numbers. So I think it's important that we, we recognize there's $30 million that needs to get utilized to ensure that the census numbers are meaningful, and I think it's important that that information come into play so that we are able to have the successful outcome that we all hope for through this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Assemblymember Rodriguez. And that concludes this joint public hearing. I want to thank everybody that participated, all my colleagues, everyone that testified, and all those out there that are listening and engaging in this process. I also want to thank both the Senate and Assembly staff, worked very hard on putting this on, and I hope everybody has a wonderful day. Thank you.